Good afternoon. I called over to Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 13th, 2018. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes for March 28th, April 11th, April 25th, and May 9th. We'll tackle them all together. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Approved. All right. Thank you, Robin, for putting those all together. The next order of business is the following public hearing item. The petition of Liberty University for a conditional use permit at 1971 University Boulevard to allow the construction of an indoor arena in IN2 Institutional District 2. Rachel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission. The subject site is connected to the existing Vine Center at 2001 University Boulevard, which is on Liberty University's main campus. The purpose of the petition is to allow the construction of 150,000-foot square foot, thousand-square-foot arena addition, which will allow for a seating capacity of 5,000. The comprehensive plan recommends institutional uses for the area. Institutional uses include religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities in our community, including churches, universities, hospitals, et cetera. The current Institutional 2 zoning was established on January 12th, 2016. The petition agrees with the zoning ordinance in that indoor arenas are permitted in IN2 districts upon approval of a conditional use permit by city council. While the upgrade will have some impact on the existing road network, improvements that are already underway, including the new roundabout and the Oddfellows Road connection, should improve overall traffic congestion. The university also recently received a CUP for the expanded football stadium, which has a capacity of 25,000. A detailed traffic study was reviewed for that petition, and it is not foreseen that both the stadium and the arena would be used on the same day, creating excessive traffic. However, as a condition of the conditional use permit today, a more conclusive traffic study will be conducted during the fall of 2018 to better understand the effects of additional seating on the levels of service when most students are on campus. If the study shows deterioration in the level of service, further traffic improvements will be done by the university to negate that degradation. The TRC Technical Review Committee reviewed the conditional use permit on May 22nd. Comments related to the proposed use have or will be addressed at the final site plan stage. The Planning Division recommends approval of the CUP with the conditions outlined in your report.
Great. Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? All right. If you could come forward and sign in and state your names.
I'm Dave Dieter with Liberty University.
And I'm Ross Horson, civil engineer.
Is there anything you'd like to add to Rachel's overview?
Yeah, she's got a pack of slides that we'll go through. So basically, the idea here is we're not really adding on to the Vine Center, we're creating a new arena. That being said, the arenas are going to be connected to each other, and the idea is not to have two arenas filled at capacity to have two separate events going at the exact same time. The arena, the real reason for this arena is to get our basketball and volleyball programs out of the Vine Center and into this arena, mainly due to overall fan experience, where, you know, the Vine Center, when you push, you can get up to 10,000 people in there. Well, we don't sell or have 10,000 people that want to come to our games, so we're looking for a more intimate venue for our sporting events. So we're kind of disconnecting the usage of the Vine Center, and that would be more of the concerts and events and very much less of any athletics. We would probably still have summer camps for youth sports in there, just because there's a floor available, but all the NCAA-level sports would be in this new building. So they're touching each other, they're two separate buildings, and we wanted to keep it in the heart of campus because we really want to get our student population attending our games, so.
Great. Thank you.
So on the event level, you can see the tunnel to the left is connecting back to the service area of Vines. That's how we'll serve, get stuff in and out and serve the space. The green spaces up there have to do with team stuff, mostly for volleyball. There's the team room and locker rooms and coaches' offices and whatnot for volleyball. Next one. So this is the concourse level, and you can see that the only real connection between the two concourses, they're at the same level, but Vines is at the bottom there. And you can see that hallway, if you zoomed in, you don't need to, but it says Vine's connection is that kind of beige hallway that's coming from the rotunda towards Vines. Yep. So that's the connection between the two buildings, and you can see that we have magnetometers and security and whatnot, so that we can control both spaces.
And the idea there would be is if we had a smaller event in either arena, we would use that main new rotunda as our entrance to the arena, and like Ross was saying, the metal detection line can service either arena. It's just a matter of unlocking, locking doors to let them either go into the Vine Center or into the new Liberty Arena.
This is the club level, just the highest level of the space. Next. Catwalk, we don't need to see that. Next, please. So there's the money shot, I think. There's the existing Vines on the left, the proposed arena that we're calling Liberty Arena on the right with the rotunda in front, and you've seen the internal layout of that. The road in front is University Drive, and we've scooted it away. It's not where it currently is, it's scooted out into that parking lot that's currently there. That long, thin parking lot's called the Furnace Lot, and so we've scooted the road away from this plaza space, just in the interest of having more space, and also you can imagine how important it is these days to keep traffic and cars away from crowds. So that's part of that. Demoss is on the right-hand side, and we created a pretty small, narrow alley between Demoss and the Liberty Arena. You can see that alley through there. Behind is Falla Library, of course, and then the light behind Vines, you can see that. So that's really, that's the site plan in a prettier version than I could do. The architect did that for us, but it's nice. Do you have anything to say about that?
No. I mean, that's basically the project.
Great.
Next one will just be, you can see the rotunda area better, kind of, you're standing in the street here, looking at the rotunda. Next one is inside the arena when it's full of people. Large center scoreboard, 5,000 seats total. Anything? Cam?
No. I think picture's worth a thousand words.
Yeah. Next one is just what it looks like, empty. Next one is full. Go ahead and go to the next one. You can see the darker seats towards the bottom, those are retractable seats, there's actually a wall there, and those can be pushed back against that wall, folded up, which will allow expanded volleyball tournaments and whatnot. I'm not sure how many courts they get on that thing for volleyball, but a bunch of courts. So they can slide that seating back up to that line where you can see that color change, so that we can get a good-sized volleyball tournament in there, we can have basketball courts for camps or something like that, running both ways.
I think it's going to be very important for the Commonwealth Games and the state games and summer camps. I mean, I think at last count, we had 93 summer camps last summer. I'm not sure what the current count is this summer, but it's not going down. So really, it's going to benefit the community, so.
So that is all of our slides. Is the condition that you mentioned in writing, Rachel, there?
The conditions?
Well, the condition regarding compliance with the recommendations of the traffic study. Is that what it says?
Yeah, that's written in. Do you want to hear the wording?
Yeah. So my concern is this, before I hear the wording, my concern is this, traffic studies take a pretty global look at everything, and the traffic engineer takes the opportunity to say, you know, "This would all work better if 460 was six lanes," which is a statement of fact. It's just, if it ends up in that traffic study, I don't want a condition necessarily or carefully worded, so that we don't necessarily say that everything that the traffic engineer says would improve things, because infinitely many things could improve things. That would be my concern.
Well, the ordinance says that the impact that the arena is having, if it degrades, then that is the responsibility of Liberty University. Because Liberty University is causing the impact.
Right. And that's fair, and I agree with you, that is what it says. So this is a gray area, so that's why we've been going back and forth with staff, but the, we're not, this is not an addition to Vines inasmuch as we now have a 15,000-seat capacity for something. We don't have a 15,000-seat capacity. What we have is an opportunity, when we have 3,000 people, to put them in this, so it's a more exciting venue, it's closer in, it's more appropriate for most of our sporting events, that 3,000 butts will sit in these seats rather than in the seat with 10,000, 7,000 empty seats. So those 3,000 people are going to drive here from wherever, they're going to park here from wherever, and so the impact in that scenario is zero. They're doing the same thing. When we have both things operating, it'll be for basketball camps, things like that. So you're talking about a couple hundred kids, or I don't know, as many as you can get, but you're still talking about 27 people in the stands, not 15,000 people in the stands. So to a great extent, the impact as far as increased traffic is zero. The great thing that this does for us is that when we have Vines set up for convocation, set up with a stage, set up to protect the floors and stuff, instead of breaking that completely down, having a quick volleyball match and then redoing it, we can have our sports here and leave Vines set up, but it doesn't change the fact that the same number of people are coming. So it's a gray area, and so that's why we've discussed it a lot with them, and that's why we need to do the traffic study. But we're hopefully going to be finding that we're not increasing traffic, peak amounts of traffic at all, and overall, not a lot.
Okay. We can go back and iron those out a little bit more if we need to.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the slides, they clarified a lot. I think you guys can just stay up there. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on behalf of this petition? Or against it? All right. Public hearings closed. Feel free to ask questions of planning staff or the petitioners.
About the traffic, I know it sounds obvious that you'll be generating no more traffic with the smaller arena than the large one, but, okay, will the traffic study be done at a time when you are having a game? Is that when the traffic study is going to be done?
We will start sampling after we get full student body population back on campus, and there will be games going on in the area.
Okay.
In the time that we're going to be doing the study.
Okay.
We purposely are delaying the traffic study until the campus is full again.
So it's a lot of conditions as best as you can.
Right. So while it's not specifically written into the conditions that a game day will be observed, we do have in here that it will be done in accordance with the requirements of our city traffic engineer. So if he specifies that it needs to take place when a game is happening, then Liberty will be responsible for that.
And is this going to be up by then? How quick?
No.
Okay.
So when we have events at Vines, we'll be able to do the traffic and see what the traffic is?
I was going to ask if, I know you say you're not going to have events at Vines and events in here because of what you just said, the purposes of each, but there's really nothing preventing you from doing that, and then you might have a problem. So could the condition be written so that you will not have events? I know you're going to occupy both buildings at the same time, for instance, during summer camp, when there are 28 kids or 280 kids on campus and 28 parents or whatever, but five years from now, you might decide, oh, well, we need this one and this one and everything going at once, and at that time, would there be another traffic study?
Right. So we did talk about putting that in as a condition, but A, we run into issues of enforcement. How do we keep them from having events at the same time in those two places? But B, is it any use of the space? Is it, you have full capacity at both houses, or you have, you know, summer camp with 200 kids, which obviously are being brought there probably by a bus or something like that? So A, enforcement would be difficult. And B, the traffic engineer said he would actually prefer to see the traffic study with the scenario of both, of max capacity in both facilities.
In this study as well?
Right.
Yeah.
Before we would agree or want to entertain that, we would want to do exactly what Rachel said, is we'd model it both full and just see what happens.
Right. Right. So a model, not a study, not a count cars, but a model of, okay.
And I failed to mention, we've just begun design, I met with Columbia Gas and the CCUSA on site, we've just begun design of a 1,600 parking space deck just on the other side of the pedestrian tunnel from the current Vines, and so we foresee that, to the extent that people can walk that far, which is not very far because of the pedestrian tunnel, but much of the event parking, once people learn it, will be in the parking deck, walking through the pedestrian tunnel, which will mean that those cars, of course, will all stay on Campus East, where, as you know, we've just recently finished Liberty Mountain Drive all the way through, over the railroad, back out to 29, and you guys are working on your part to connect back up to Breeze Wood, so that whole Campus East with that large road is going to take a lot of pressure off of campus. And when we have a lot of traffic on campus, the traffic on campus, it's not great, but it's traffic on campus. It can back up to public roadways. If you come back through our new traffic circle at the stadium, it becomes a city road there. But as we look at public streets, University Drive is not a public street, and looping around, all that is not public streets. So as we look at traffic here, it's, when Liberty makes traffic, they make it for themselves, they don't make it for Greater Lynchburg. What our traffic engineer will be looking at, and what Don is very concerned about, is that we continue to look at Ward's Road, that, you know, that's very important, and of course, Cantler's Mountain Road. Those are the things that we'll be looking at.
Where are graduations currently held? Is that the Vine side?
Graduations are all over campus, so there's the main event at the stadium, that's for everybody, and then the colleges all break out. So, but you'll only have 2,000, 2,500 at a lot of the smaller colleges. I mean, the school business is our largest, we usually have the school business in the indoor practice facility, because it's got a big, wide-open football field. A lot of the smaller colleges, you'll have them in Vines, you'll have them in, we do some at the indoor track, so it's a variety of places on campus.
So I forgot about the breakout.
Yeah.
Are they at different hours?
Yeah, they're different times. And if it's raining, then we got to reschedule everything, because we try to bring everybody inside as much as possible, so we'll stagger the timing so that everybody can be inside.
And I think graduation weekend is just...
Well, that's what I was saying.
We're not doing the traffic study that weekend.
Well, no, 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 where I was going with that. I agree completely with what you said. You know, most of what you're going to create from a snarl standpoint is going to be a Liberty problem, because it's going to be Liberty, you know, stuff. The only place that would possibly be a place for slippage would be during a graduation weekend, and you're already kind of, to your point, that's already a disaster. So, you know, it would just be a question of, you know, are we having more room so maybe a few more people can come? But I don't know, at that point, it's like a, you know, it's like a family reunion. At that point, what does five extra people matter? Means less potato salad's left over. So, but that's what I was just trying to figure out, you know, kind of from the standpoint of where you are. Just one other quick clarification point, I thought you said, Rachel, when you were doing your situation, that the Oddfellows Road would not, will not be open when they do, that whole area will not be open when they do the traffic study, correct? That won't be finished?
No, because the traffic study's happening this fall.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, that, yeah, yeah.
I knew what you meant.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, we would much rather count cars once it's open, but we understand that it has to go now, so there's going to be assumptions made on that whole connection piece, so it's not all we can do at this point.
Traffic study would include the improvements that we had seen in October, that with the new circle, the rerouted University Drive?
That's all happening now, so.
Yeah, okay.
That's under construction now, right.
So the only question I had, other than that, was, right now, that parking lot's the bus, kind of like a bus terminal almost, what's going to happen with that? And where is that going to go? Or you'll have any arrangements for that?
So the bus, that was really a turnaround, and we also had to stage the buses there for convocation. We require all the students that are on campus to attend three days a week, and the traffic light has really helped our bus. We've never really closed down the turnaround there, but having the traffic signal allows the buses to actually get the correct loop time to be able to allow the students to make their classes.
Signal where?
I'm sorry, the new traffic signal we put on campus, which allows the traffic to go through Regions Parkway and Liberty University Drive, that was always a pinch point when we didn't have the signal, because the buses, their acceleration is very slow, and they can't jump across those lanes of traffic. So now we put the signal there, there's a guaranteed timing on those buses getting through that intersection, so we're going to be doing one-way loops, because we can get the circle around now. We're also going to put a parallel, I mean, the road in front of the Vines Center, Liberty Arena, is going to be three lanes, it's going to be two lanes of traffic, and it's going to have one lane about 600 foot long to stage the buses.
You can kind of see the little hour further route come to there where the bus lane is ending, and we have about 500 to 600 feet of bus lane that we can do the articulated buses or the straight-body buses along there for about 600 feet, and that'll be a dedicated lane. A couple of those spaces, depending on how we end up landing, but two of the spaces may be taken up by broadcast trucks when we have ESPN or somebody in, but all the rest will just be buses along there.
And those might be the days that you use the Vines for a basketball game, when a lot of people show up, would you?
One would think.
Yeah.
Well, and the commitment that we've made to our student body and everybody is, we're going to try to have the parking garage open before this arena opens. So part of the arena construction, the furnace parking lot, is gone, and that's 120, 100-something spaces, and there's going to be short-term pain for those folks, because a lot of it was staff and commuters and things like that. So we're going to, you know, do some more shuttling on our east campus parking, short-term pain, long-term gain for them, because once we get the new garage open, they will have a covered walkway path from the garage to the tunnel, through the tunnel, and then it drops them right at the front of Vines. So that Furnace Lot will basically be replaced, and it'll make everybody healthier, because their Fitbits are going to, you know, record more steps, and everybody's going to be just hunky-dory, so.
Where does the tunnel come up?
On this side of the street?
It's right in the left, lower-left corner of that picture, it's coming under 460 there and going straight towards maybe that black car, maybe the little right there.
Yeah, that little black car, yeah.
I mean, where does it come up, though? Right, this side of that black car?
That bank is coming up as it goes towards the bottom, so it just, it daylights through the embankment of 460, and it comes through.
It's actually got a kind of a Y ramp, one goes kind of north, one goes south, so.
You're just not sure.
We are not.
Yeah, I'm not sure. 460 is over here, right?
Yeah, you're kind of flying over 460 right here, and the, right about here, it comes through, and then two sidewalks go down this way currently. If you drive by there today...
Above ground?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I think, we spent a lot of time discussing traffic, because that's always a big concern, and I think from a big picture, Liberty hasn't done a lot to improve traffic over the past few years, and I don't see this having a detrimental impact. And going back to the original request, this is also not a rezoning request or anything major, it's a CUP for a use that is allowed within the zoning upon condition of a CUP. So the presentation's good, the slide's added a lot, and I think it's really solid. I would express concern about not doing proffers because we can't enforce them. I mean, we still have speed limits, even though we can't always enforce speed limits, so that's not specific to this request, but that's just popped up that, to me, that's not a legitimate reason to not have a proffer, because we're afraid we can't enforce them. If it needs to be done, then it needs to be done, and we can find out a way to proffer it. But that has nothing to do with this request, I'm just, that's a bigger item. So I think everything here is solid, and I certainly support it.
Is there a proffer?
Just some conditions.
Just some conditions, yeah.
Somehow I missed...
Right here.
Oh, there. Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Get that curiosity, where's that parking net going? I'm looking at that like...
Okay, you see the beach volleyball court?
It's going to take out the last two dorms before you get to the beach volleyball.
Okay.
And so imagine a big rectangle there coming over to that third dorm, like 25 feet off that third dorm, and then from there, you go down off the corner down to the, those sidewalks that go down into the tunnel.
Okay. Okay. How many cars in that hole?
1,600.
Wow.
We were shooting for 2,000, but then we would block the view of even the highest dorms, so it's only going to be five stories, not six.
Well, and the ultimate goal is to...
Then we all steer as new elevators, so everyone will need to steer a minute.
With their Fitbits, yeah.
Well, our ultimate goal is to keep the cars away from the students. I mean, you know, it's just amazing to me that college students, they think that cars are just magically going to stop, they walk out in the road, and they just think that maybe that's just a college thing, but, you know, if we can get more traffic off campus, it's just going to be safer for the students, so.
Rachel, I have just a question about the after, after the traffic study's done, and the city transportation engineer comes up with, you know, four or five things that they recommend Liberty to do, like, is that, that's just assumed that with this condition, that's just assumed that it'll be done? Like, is there a check from the, I'm just asking, because I don't know, I'm relatively new, but is it, does the Planning Commission follow up with that, or is that, do we just completely, if we approve this and then it goes through the city, like it goes to city transportation engineer, and it's up to them to stay on top of, make sure that everything is done that they recommend?
Right. So the traffic study that Liberty does is going to be the one, that's going to be the party that has suggestions on what to do to either fix or maintain the level of service.
They hire the traffic.
Yes. And this, but they work with our city traffic engineer throughout that process, it's not, it's a one, it's a conversation usually.
And then there's a list that might get, okay.
Right.
And then who follows up and makes sure that everything gets done that's recommended?
Right. So the city transportation engineer would look at it and approve it, say, this is something we agree with, and it looks like it will fix the problem, potential problem, if there is one. I know Liberty has said again and again, it's in their own best interest to follow through with traffic improvements, because Liberty's traffic problems affect Liberty students and faculty and staff, so I don't have any doubt that they will follow through. If for some reason they weren't following through, city council could potentially revoke the conditional use permit, because that's how CUPs work, it's not a rezoning. If for some reason it's just not working out, city council could revoke it, or could, you know, if there was another project that needed to get city council approval, then it could potentially be held up, because they haven't followed through on the conditions of this, but again...
Or a CO, you guys go up to CO, you've got pretty many hammers to work with.
Right. A certificate of occupancy, which would say you can use this building from the building inspector.
Okay.
And I'm sure they're going to want to use their new arena, so.
And so following on, so our worst case is that the guy we hire comes up with conditions that are undoable, unfeasible for whatever reason. Our safety valve would be that we would come back for a conditional use permit, this is the worst case, I'm just saying, would be that we would come back for a conditional use permit to revise our conditions somehow, and it would be incumbent on us to lay out what we're doing, what we're not doing, why we can't do it, for whatever reason. I don't foresee it happening, but I think there's a safety valve on both sides, so I think that's okay. And our experience with traffic studies, you all know this, they're very localized. They're not going to come back and say, you need to fix 460 five miles away. And if they do, then you're hiring the wrong person. So that's your fault. But I don't anticipate any...
So that's your fault, but I don't anticipate any. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of this to council.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, we're recommending approval of council, so good luck with the project, and good luck with the new facility, hopefully.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Are there any other business items or new items for discussion? Anything major coming down the pike? Robin?
No.
You do have some items for your next.
Yeah, there's some items for June 27th.
Okay.
The, what's that, traffic study?
Traffic study on Gray's Road.
Yeah.
Oh, you saw the legal notice in the paper today, good.
And I checked it out this morning on the way to my Bible study, and I did send you an email, I will not be here today.
And I won't be here for that either. You will not, do I have at least four people?
I was not planning to be here for that one either.
You're not planning on being here on the 27th?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask. That could be a swing if I had.
Well, if all of three of you come and Cham is here, then we have four.
Yeah, Tom, it was pretty, it was important to have the traffic study going to this planning commission because they are on a timeline. I can't remember. Okay.
Is it the Region 2001?
Yes.
It might be.
And I'm sorry, you three, it would be Kenzie, Tom, and Dave plus Cham.
Yeah, I think I'll be here, but it might be worth sending out an email to everyone, just confirming, sure. Yeah.
I just sent you an email. I haven't read the traffic study, but I did look at the house.
Are you going to send out an email to tell us all how to vote?
Of course not.
We'll have a, it's probably Wi-Fi access, so I can read the traffic study.
And the downtown master plan's sometime in July, we'll see it.
Yep, so the downtown master plan, we're working feverishly on, hoping to release that at the end of the month.
To do what at the end?
To release it to the public at the end of the month.
At this month?
All right, great. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening and good rest of the week.